Church to lead the invocation.
Let's pray. Father God, we come to you and we thank you for our city and we thank you for those that represent the people and make choices and decisions that impact so many. God, we pray that as the night moves on, God, that your Spirit would be here, a spirit of unity, Father, a spirit of togetherness, and God, that together we can make decisions that impact so many. God, help us to be good stewards of the blessings you've given us. And God, we again just thank you for the great city of Fairhope and we pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, council, the first thing on our agenda is to approve the minutes of the August 24th special council meeting and then our August 27th regular city council meeting. Anybody got any corrections they'd like to make to any of those minutes? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Next, Mayor, your report.
Thank you, Councilman Robinson. Let me get back to my notes here. I had a couple of images. Jeff, if you're in there, I was gonna put the screen up for the police department. The Fairhope Police Department commemorates 9/11 every year with a ceremony outside the police building. This year, they are remembering our fallen with a week-long event. Sherri Schwartz outlined the events at our Director Roundtable, but briefly, here's what's happening this week, and you can find more information on their Facebook. Today was a blood drive, and I know that they exceeded their goal today. Tuesday, tomorrow, our annual ceremony in front of the PD, which will begin at 9:00 a.m. Wednesday, law enforcement recruitment drive beginning at noon at Centennial Hall on the campus of Coastal Alabama Community College. Thursday, at Shepherd's Place, which is located at the Fairhope United Methodist Church, to visit and serve lunch. And Friday, prep and deliver meals on wheels with Ecumenical Ministries. Saturday, Recovery Fest, 9:00 a.m. until noon at Battleship Park, and Coastal Cleanup, 8:00 to noon, and Friday. So if y'all can join her or need any more information on that, please call Sherri Schwartz. We were lucky once again that Gordon proved to be less than a threat than feared. I wanted to thank all of our employees who were prepared to do what needed to be done in the event of a real incident. We had a chance to test our response and to perfect our emergency plan operations. We are still looking to resolve the need we need for a FEMA-approved shelter for city employees who are on-call during emergency incidents. Vibrio picture. Our efforts to educate the public about the dangers of the naturally occurring vibrio bacteria was applauded last week by the State Department of Public Health. Part one of these efforts included installing new signage at North Beach to share some ways to protect people from the harmful effects of this bacteria. We will also be installing several showers along the waterway, creating instructional flyers as part of our efforts. If you will look at our, let's see, I think first is the frequently asked questions on the website, if you have that. We are working to address frequently asked questions for our citizens on our new website, which we will share topics as they're updated. The tab is located, and I guess he didn't have that, but it's on the front page of the website. Water quality is posted, and we are updating the overall plan to address, there it is, that's the front page of the website, and so that's just a button right there for you to click. We're adding to this all the time, but we're doing some of the critical questions that were asked every day, and so that will be a place where we will update you on those Now we can go to the butterflies. In case you haven't seen it, our Pocket Park project between the library and the parking lot where the farmer's market is held is underway. The first part of this project was a collaboration between the city and the Eastern Shore Art Center. Artists painted a beautiful mural of butterflies, which we know will engage the imaginations of the children who will be, again, gather in this area for the walking school bus once the construction is complete for the roof of the library. Speaking of butterflies, Fairhope is joining national efforts to save the monarch butterfly. I will be signing the mayor's Monarch Pledge, a partnership between the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the National Wildlife Federation, and I look forward to Fairhope being a part of this initiative. We have hired a new museum director, Philip Bolin. He starts Tuesday, tomorrow, to have some time for Donnie to teach him everything he needs to know before he leaves on October 1st. Donnie is retiring the 1st of October and has become synonymous with the Fairhope Museum of History. His shoes will be hard to fill, but we look forward to having Philip with us and know he will do a great job. Tuesday, I'm not sure if you have this slide or not, Jeff, because it was the last minute, tomorrow at the Centennial Hall, which is located on the Coastal Alabama Community College campus facing School Street, they will be showing a film of interviews with Fairhopeians, and it's just called Fairhope Stories. It's an hour long, it's free to the public, and it starts at 5:30 if you have an opportunity to see this. We are planning our first annual city golf tournament on November 9th. We put the flyers in the back of the council chambers. $60 per person includes 18-hole scramble, golf cart fee, range balls, lunch, on-the-course beverages, prizes, and entertainment, and from what I understand, that's like a big, big bargain. Sign up as a team or pair, and our staff will make up a foursome with you. Sign-up information is on the table at the back of the chamber, and you can contact the pro shop for any information or questions. On September 25th, there will be a free flu shot and balance testing at the NIC Center. I didn't know what balance testing is, but then after Lynn explained it to me, I'm like, I think I'm gonna go do that balancing testing. Anyway, this is free, open to all Fairhope citizens, so if you want to take advantage of this, it's September 25th at the NIC Center. Speaking of good health, I had the opportunity today to deliver a proclamation to the County Place Senior Living in honor of National Assisted Living Week. The theme was Capture the Moment, which began yesterday and runs through Saturday. It was really a nice, I was gonna ask who typed this proclamation because it's really, really nice. I'm only gonna read part of it, but whereas the theme of National Assisted Living Week 2018 is Capture the Moment highlights the opportunity to share with our residents a multitude of events and activities that demonstrate how much we care for, love, appreciate, and appreciate them. Then, I, Karen Wilson, Mayor of Fairhope, Alabama, do hereby proclaim the week of September 9th through the 15th as National Assisted Living Week in this community. I urge all citizens to visit friends and loved ones who reside at these facilities and to meet and acknowledge those dedicated individuals that care for our senior citizens in these residents. We have a lot to update, I'm almost finished. Last Friday, we were awarded a Smart Growth Grant to support our visual preference survey process, which focuses on educating decision-makers and the public about smart growth principles by using examples and images. The visual preference survey will help prepare stakeholders on the extensive process that will be, that we will start for the Comprehensive Land Use Plan next year with the $650,000 Restore Funds. It will also provide us with immediate input that we can use to propose updates to the regulations for our commercial corridors. And as many of y'all probably saw, we have another list that we made. Our wonderful city makes it to the top of many lists for which we are very proud, most recently, the 13 cutest small towns in the South. Many sometimes feel threatened by this unsolicited exposure, and I too feel the same, but I want to point out that because we have a strong planning department and planning commission we now have in place, and the forthcoming Comprehensive Land Use Plan are what will help encourage quality growth to ensure that we stay this way. And lastly, I would like to ask for a moment of silence for the Glaze family. Dr. Ed Glaze, his wife, Alicia, and their daughter, Anna Grace, lost a treasured son and brother Sunday morning when Curtis died in an automobile accident outside of Auburn. Please hold this family and our thoughts, and your thoughts, and keep them in your prayers. Just a moment of silence. I mean, Robertson, you know, the other one over there.
This one.
Right.
I know your talking.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd now like to open the floor for public participation for agenda items only. So if you're here tonight to speak to item five through 12, this is your opportunity to speak, and you will have three minutes. Reminder, there will be an additional public participation at the end for non-agenda items. Seeing no one, I will close public participation and go to council comments. Councilman Conyers.
Yes, sir. Just a few comments. Wasn't gonna really say anything, but since I finally get a chance to.
Go first.
Go first, I think I will. First, we've got Historic Preservation Committee meeting Wednesday at 9:30. That's a change in date. It's normally, in the past, been on Thursdays. They changed this to accommodate my schedule, so just if anyone's regularly trying to attend that, it is Wednesday, and that will probably be the new time moving forward. Friday, we have an Environmental Advisory Board meeting at 3:00 p.m., and then Monday, a week from today, is the Library Board at 5:00 p.m. Really, the only comment I wanted to discuss was the K-1 Center. We've got an opportunity for the City of Fairhope to purchase that. We had a special meeting last week, and I just wanna say it's a fantastic opportunity for the City of Fairhope. I'm really, really excited about what we can do with this property. We're able to get it in a position where we're really not gonna spend that much money out of pocket. We've got a grant, pending grant, that will hopefully fund 80% of the cost of the acquisition as well as the renovation of that property, and I think this is gonna be one of the best things we can do the entire four-year term that we're up here serving. So keep your eyes on what happens with the K-1 Center. Should be a great opportunity, and certainly wanna hear from the citizens about that, too. That's it.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Councilman Robinson. Yeah, the Bike Ped Committee meeting was canceled due to tropical depression, whatever it was, Gordon. The EAC meeting got moved to 4:30 this Wednesday in the library. And Council and Mayor, I set up packing in front of y'all, was in contact with Mobile Baykeeper about trying to find out the source of the, you know, the testing that they do, and they come back with the high bacteria levels, whether it's human or cow or goose, or just find out what the source is so we know kinda how to address it and move forward. This is not exactly what I was hoping for. As you see, it's titled microbial source tracking options for Fly Creek. I don't want it just for the creek, I want it for the bayfront in general. You know, if they come back with a high level, you know, above safety, I'd like for them to go ahead and complete that test on that sample and find out what the source is so we can narrow it down along the bayfront as well as the creek. So anyway, you can look through that, it's got, you know, the costs associated with it, what they're gonna be testing, but I will get a new proposal and try to get it to you and have it on the agenda for next meeting. Hopefully y'all get behind me and support this. That's all I have.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Boone.
Yeah, actually, I wanted to kinda talk about this at the work session, but we didn't have enough time, but Robert Bryant and myself met with Richard Peterson and staff and the mayor concerning the water tank. Basically, this is informative for y'all. The contractor, the original contractor, basically come back to work threefold on working on this tank and would like for us to work with him so that he can finish this tank by December. And we probably need to put our heads together and think what we do need to do, but I would kinda recommend, if we could, to work with this particular contractor. He seems sincere, and the other problem is if we try to pull him and get another contractor, by the time we got one even started, would be around November, December, and we could hopefully be through with this tank by that time. But anyway, it was a very, very good meeting, I felt, and I think we can get this tank started back on the right track. That's it.
All right, thanks, sir. Yeah, I don't like going last because most things have already been said, but I would like to reiterate one of the things that Jimmy said, and that is with the K-1 Center, you know, you never know whether the decisions you're making up here are right or wrong until you see how it unfolds down the road, but you try to make the best decision you can with the information that you've got available to you at the time, and the purchase of the K-1 Center and the way that we're hoping to get it seems like one of the true no-brainers that we get to deal with up here. And when you have, it makes you feel better during this past week. I've had people reach out to me from different communities in the Mobile and Ballin County area to tell me how grateful and how happy they are that we were able to move forward in the way that we are because they lost out on that opportunity in their communities for historic buildings that have, you know, historical significance, whether that be education or otherwise, and so it truly makes me feel that much better about what we're doing that other people recognize and missed out on that opportunity, and we were able to take advantage of that. And I'd also like to, again, recognize the Glaze family and let them know that they are in our thoughts and prayers for the untimely death of their son, and it's tragic and something that no parent should have to deal with, and it's hard for any family at any time. But with that being said, I will close council comments and go to Agenda Item Number Five. And that is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves the request from the Fairhope Sunset Rotary fundraiser, and that they may proceed with plans to solicit adoption of the trees in the downtown Fairhope area for the purpose of raising money for a Fairhope community organization mutually selected by the City of Fairhope and the Fairhope Sunset Rotary. Sherri Lee, are you gonna talk about that if we need anything?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know if we will. I guess the first thing I'll do is open it up for a motion.
I make a motion. Will you approve it?
Okay, I've got a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Questions, council, comments?
Yeah, the gentleman, I can't remember his name.
Mr. Yeager.
Mr. Yeager, that gave the presentation last week. He sent me the copy of what the prototype, what the signage would look like on the tree. And the only reason I asked for that, you know, I can see this as possibly a slippery slope, if you will. I don't wanna get in the business of auctioning off parts of downtown and take it a step further, you know, next year, what if another rotary comes to us before this rotary says we wanna do that, and then we're back in a situation of, you know, does anybody have the rights to do it every year? So anyway, that was my only reason for asking to see it and just a little bit more thought. Just, I think we need to be careful about auctioning off downtown Fairhope.
I agree. Any other comments, questions, concerns?
Other than that, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I also saw the proposed plaque, and I think it, obviously, it was in paper form and not at what, you know, plaque form like will ultimately look like, but I thought it was, I thought it looked well-done and thought it was something we could, that the council probably as a whole, I don't know if everybody saw it or had the chance to look at it, but I thought it was something we could get behind. But all right, if there's no other comments or concerns or questions, then I will, got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Resolution Number Six is that the city council approves the three school resource officers that are being requested in the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget for the police department. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Council, any comments or questions?
I'm just assuming these are, we're doing this in advance of the budget just so we can go ahead and get them in the school system. Okay, all right.
Well, I did request two officers as well because we know we have a lot more than two officers in the budget. Again, just because of the process it takes to get someone hired in that department, it's a long process.
And I know based on, you know, for those of you who weren't here for that, last work session, we had the police department present their budget and their budget request for next year. These items, these resource officers were part of that budget, and we will be receiving a supplement from the county for, I'm sorry.
Up to $50,000.
Up to $50,000 for each of these school resource officers, and I totally agree with those being in the schools, and I look forward to getting them in there. I think we already actually have school res, two in the schools right now. All right, if there are any, no other questions on this or comments, I will put it up for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Item Number Seven is a resolution to award the bid for new south-end restroom at North Beach Park to Eric Lazari Construction, LL, LL? I'm guessing LZ in there somewhere. With a total bid proposal of $96,460. Who's here to talk about this? Richard? Just give everybody a brief background, I guess, or refresher.
Yes, sir. This is a budgeted item. We had $116,000 in the budget. This is a replacement bathroom. ADA compliance was the big issue, and then this is a larger bathroom than what it's replacing, and got a good contractor. The bids were all over the place. If you saw the bid tabs in there, and we feel good about this and ready to move forward.
Okay, thank you, Richard. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Council, any comments or discussion?
It's Lazari, not Lazari.
What did I say?
Lazari.
What is it?
Lazari.
Lazari? I think Lazari sounds a little more. No more hard names on this sheet then, you know, everybody's a Smith from here on out. All right, well, there's no other discussion. I will put it up for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item Number Eight is a resolution to award the bid for point-to-point connection from the Fairhope Police Department to Fairhope Docks for a three-year contract to Three Play LLC with a total bid proposal of $7,990 annually, $23,970 total.
What's, what about the 96,000?
Don't, don't, okay.
All right.
All right, who's here to discuss this item? Jeff? Oz, will you come in here and discuss this with us? Thank you, Jeff.
All right. This is a connection that was requested by the Fairhope Docks. Right now, they have a combination of AT&amp;T, U-verse, and Verizon Cellular, and we just cannot, it's harder to provide a reliable connection down there, so we're having some connection issues, and that really affects the credit card machines processing credit cards. There were gaps where we just could not process, you know, had to do manually, couldn't process credit cards. So what was requested from the IT department is put a connection out to bid with something more stable. So they're gonna be utilizing fiber, which is, you know, that's, will be, should be, you know, 100% connectivity all the time down there, so we're hoping to prove a reliability with this connection. They were the, and this Three Play, they were the lowest bidder.
Jeff, is this a budgeted item?
Was it in the 2019 budget?
I hope so.
I wonder, Jeff. Okay.
All right, council, with that explanation, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Council, any comments or discussion? You know, any unbudgeted items are, you know, scary because you never know how many are gonna pop up, but this seems reasonable, Jeff, and obviously, it's something that's prohibiting us from collecting money at the docks and it's something we need to get taken care of.
Yeah, right. I mean, it was, it was, you know, we bought the, or started this service halfway through the year, you know, at the beginning of the year, I had no idea this would be, you know, this would be an issue. We were hoping to get away with just having U-verse service because they don't have much bandwidth requirements down there, but, you know, it's just not, it's not as reliable as it needs to be. You know, they're at the end of the road, so, you know, it's hard to provide, I guess, a good, we're using a residential connection, so it's hard to provide, you know, a reliable connection through old existing copper cables. So, yeah, it affects business. Not being able to, you know, run the credit card machines, it definitely affects business.
Thank you, Jeff, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Resolution, or item Number Nine is a resolution to procure a John Deere TX 2019 ground maintenance equipment with attachments and accessories and equipment for the water department, and the equipment is available for direct procurement through the Sourcewell Purchasing Co-op and therefore does not have to be let out for bid. This has been nationally bid through the Sourcewell's bid process. The cost will be $9,247.76.
Correct. It is not, it's not on the budget, but I do have money left over on two projects. One is the Bayview project, I'll come in about $13,000, and one is gonna be the camera truck, which I still have about $13,000. By allowing me to get this, the guys will be able to go out and do their job. All the work that we do at the plant, it'll stay at the plant, it's not on a main road, and we have to take tools. And right now, we put tools in the front bucket of a John Deere tractor and take it out there, and it's just not very efficient. I have tried my best to piecemeal something together. The golf course was nice enough to let me use one of theirs, it lasted about three months. The service truck I have down there now is in really bad shape, so I'm gonna turn it in immediately as soon as, if you will, allow me to get this. This is gonna make us a thousand times more efficient down there.
Okay, council, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any comments or questions, council? Hearing none, I will put it up for vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item Number 10 is a resolution to award the RFQ for a, what is that, 5,015 KV URD double seal, persimian strand seal, 133% insulation, number 420 for the electric department, Gresko, with a total cost of $11,600. Y'all probably thought I just made those numbers up, and just, that's actually what it says. But is anybody here to discuss this item? Jeremy, I saw you there and I knew you wanted to say something, so.
Just gotta talk about Jay. This is basically just a 5,015 KV URD double seal, persimian strand seal, 133% insulation, This is basically just a five-tenth foot of our primary wire. Gotta have it to get transformers hot, keep people power. And I guess it's over a certain number, and it's gotta come see you guys. There you go.
All right. Thank you, Jeremy. Council, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
So we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion, questions? If not, I'll entertain, I'll put it up for vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes. Number 11 is a request from the Economic and Community Development Department Director Sherri Lee Botat requesting permission to close Delamar Avenue during First Friday Art Walk. Don't be looking for yourself, you're sitting right there.
I didn't, I didn't realize this was gonna be on me, but, so we have been closing this for a very long time, and I realized that there was no resolution in place allowing us to actually close it, so I thought that might be a good idea to get that in place because that is our process.
Did you guys discuss this with the, I mean, I know we've been doing it for a long time, but did y'all go discuss this with the businesses?
We actually went, yes, to every single business. Sherri Schwartz and Paige went to every single business along Delamar and got their input, and all of them were in favor of closing it except one.
Okay.
So, and there was one that was on the fence, but-
Pretty good.
Still good odds, right? So the majority were in safer-
And this is obviously for safety and for-
For safety purposes. We closed it this last Friday at the chief's request, just because it has been closed, we figured people were used to that, and it would be unsafe to open it, so, and we already have people requesting to do things, public art, all sorts of activities, so we're gonna come up with a process for people to apply to do that on the closed street now that it's officially closed. Everyone's getting excited. The word is out.
All right.
Or maybe officially closed.
Basically, it's just closed from between like 5:00 and 9:00, it's not closed. It's not like an all-day deal.
That's right, but we will not allow parking there, so people will have to, their cars will have to be removed before that time. There was some conversation about maybe we let them park and then they just leave after 8:00, but we've had people leave in the middle anyway, move barricades and drive through crowds, and it's just not safe, so they're not gonna allow parking. But we will put out notices, there, we're gonna do a lot of outreach about it, so people won't leave their cars there and intend to get out before 8:00.
All right. Council, I will entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Council, any discussion or comments?
Yeah, I was asked about this item on, on the radio this morning.
Oh, you were.
And Lori was saying there was a lot of negative feedback, not on Delamar, but when Fairview Avenue was closed earlier, I guess it was early this year, when, when we had the Theater on the Bluff event on the same night.
Yeah.
So I thought it was good safety reason at that point, but she said there was a lot of negative feedback about closing Fairview Avenue. Is that true?
Yeah, we did get some negative feedback, and that's why we just tested it, although I think there are other ancillary reasons for that, one being like you brought up, there was that huge performance going on that night. The other, I don't know that there was enough publicity before we closed it to let people know. We didn't do the door-to-door, although we did go to the merchants' meetings, and of course, the Merchants Association put the word out that we were gonna do that. There are still people that want to try it again, but I, I would like to do a little more, get a little more feedback before doing that and work with the merchants, you know, before we try it again.
Yeah, just a safety standpoint and several other reasons. I just think it's a good idea to shut down a few of the main streets.
Yeah, and some people loved it, and I, again, I think that testing at one time for something as big as that, I mean, that's a big deal.
Might have been short notice as well, that kinda caught people off.
That's right, so we can bring that forward again.
I think, I think there's something about the road being completely empty and it's dead, and it does have a negative impact on business. I mean, that's a lot of what I've received, and what we've been doing is kinda closing just for Delamar, you know, and the, and the people who are there, they have to stay there until 8:00. I still was, you know, voiced my opinion that I think clearing it out ahead of time, because closing the street ahead of time requires all the cars to be gone long before the event starts, and just the, the feedback that I get is it has a poor impact on, on business. And so I think a hybrid solution is still something we can do and really manage it with our police department, and just be clear that, you know, your car stays here until after the event. If you move it, you know, you will be ticketed or whatnot. And the only reason is, is because it just kinda kills that synergy of, of an event fixing to happen, and that's just my input.
So just as long as people don't move their cars, and that's another, and a hybrid approach is something we can talk about, too.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're voting on whether to close the street or not, you know, the mechanism of how and who can park there and when, I think is probably something more in the details that, that would be up to the police department.
Yes.
Exactly what they, I think what we would want is for them to do what they think is the safest alternative.
Right.
And they would know better than us at this point because they, they're out there seeing it and dealing with it on a day-to-day basis. And so with that said, I will, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes, thank you, Sherri Lee.
Thank you.
And the, item number 12 is an application for a nonprofit tax-exent license for an alcoholic beverage license by Fairhope Educational Enrichment Foundation. FIF presents School of Rock, a fall fundraising event located, located at 161 North Section Street, Fairhope, Alabama, on Friday, October 19th, 2018, beginning at 6:30 PM. All in order? Okay, perfect. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next, I'll open the floor up for public participation for non-agenda items. So if you got anything else you wanna talk about, now is your chance. All right. Seeing no one, I will close public participation, and we will now, can I read the, am I gonna read this whole thing? All right. We're gonna go into executive session, I'm gonna read this, as City Attorney Marcus E. McDowell, I hereby request, City Council go into executive session based on section 36 dash 25A dash 7A 3 to discuss pending litigation. The executive session will last approximately 30 minutes.
We don't plan on doing anything afterwards.
Yeah, we do not plan on taking any action afterwards, so no need to wait around for that. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, go into executive session.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We will go into executive session.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Meeting is adjourned.